We'll go, Mr. Tichum, would you please introduce yourself and your opening statement? And it's two minutes.
Sure, thank you so much. Hi, I'm Taisheng. I'm running for Lowell City Council in District Eight, often known as the Highlands. You might be thinking, why am I running? Who am I? Basically, I'm running because I want to give back. I've been here for over thirty years, since I was a little boy. Went through the whole school system, now I'm an entrepreneur. I feel so successful with my wife and my kids in the Highlands. Yeah, no capital school, just around the corner. I'm running again, just simply just to give back.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott.
Hi, I'm Rodney Elliott, and I'm running for the Lowell City Council in the Potracaville District One. I'm married, I have two daughters, and I have three granddaughters. I'd like to thank the voters for placing your trust in me over the last twenty-four years. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the city council to try to make our community a better place to live. My background is in government finance, conservation, and recreation. I'm fortunate enough to have been elected counselor. I'll use my experience in municipal finance and, yeah, to continue forward. As someone who doesn't shy away from an issue, I'll continue to articulate the needs of our neighborhood. We're going to need experienced leadership on the council and someone who has institutional knowledge. It's going to be crucial to have a representative who can get things done and the energy to follow through. I was a councilman who fought for long overdue sewer extensions and sidewalks in Farina Mav. Recently advocated to preserve Raleigh's farm from development. My desire to identify important issues and my passion to complete them haven't waned. I've listened to and acted on your concerns about safety in the boulevard and cut through traffic, road conditions, code violations, illegal housing, and public safety. I've worked with the Potracaville Citizens Council and I'm not afraid to stand up to the special interest. I will not be complicit to absentee landlords or developers who don't care about us. I'm proud to support, I was proud to support the Potracaville Master Plan that serves as a roadmap to protect our neighborhood and preserve its character. You'll also get a counselor who watches the city finances and knows how the budget, inside and out. I utilize my education and experience to ensure your tax dollars continue to be spent in wise, open, and transparent manner, and Potracaville gets a fair share. In closing, if you vote for me, please know that I always will return your phone calls, your emails, your texts. You know me, you feel comfortable in approaching me at the market basket, the soccer field that's just on the street. I worked side by side with you during the floods of 'oh six and 'oh seven. The only special interest I'm beholden to is you. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Next, Counselor Dan Rourke, please.
Yeah, I think next one is Eric Kidcher, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Eric Kidcher. I'm running for Lowell City Council, District Eight, the Highlands section of the city. I'm a lifelong Highlands resident. I raised, chose to raise my family there. I donated my time as a baseball coach for over twelve years there. I've coached basketball. I've donated countless hours of cleanups up in the Highlands section of the city. My background is thirty-two years of municipal government between finance, sustainability, vulnerability. I've been included in solar panel updates to tree plantations, being on tree committees. And I think that with all that experience, it's needed in the Highlands at this time when we're going through so much change. And I believe everyone should be included in the conversations as government moves forward. And moving forward, we need to have, hold people accountable. And I think that I am a person who has the background to do that, the experience, and the dedication and putting in the hours for us. I was a part of saving $2 million on a water meter replacement program as the executive director of the Lowell Regional Water Utility. We have donated countless times, countless hours to making our city and improving our roads, streets. Having an engineering background, going to the Washington School, I went from there to the Daly School to grade a Lowell technical high school. And from there, I went to the University of Massachusetts Lowell where I obtained a civil and environmental engineering degree. I've worked hard at giving back to the community, and it's an honor to be able to walk your neighborhood every day and try to earn your vote. Come in November 2nd, I ask that all of you implore, I implore all of you to consider me as for one of your votes, and I strongly would like to represent you on the Lowell City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, but not least, and I apologize for messing up the order for that, Counselor Dan Rourke.
Good evening. My name is City Counselor Daniel Rourke, and I'm running to represent Potracaville in District One of City Council Race. Not just Potracaville, but also the city overall as well. I'm a married father of two teenagers. I've been at Potracaville for over twenty years professionally. I'm a probation officer at the Lowell Judicial Center. I've been doing that to help people that are addiction and in need, doing that since the year 2000. I'm very fortunate to be able to help my state and my city from a Lowell perspective. My family is a family of public servants, would be the Police Department, DPW, Water Department, and former politicians as well. Volunteer service includes coaching in Potracaville Youth Organization, the St. John's Dock Basketball League, and currently the Lowell Junior Football Program. Been doing that since the age of twenty-one and continue to do so long after my council career. As a counselor, I'm not someone who just sticks to a thumb in the air to see what the wave of the political avenue is going with. I am someone that is consistent, that returns on phone calls. I have knocked over a thousand doors and talked to over several hundred residents and brought concerns directly to City Hall. Once elected, I'll continue to do so going forward. Be proud to represent Potracaville both as a district counselor and citywide. Thank you.
Thank you. So candidates, we had the fortune of curating and generating questions from our community, and we got a lot of questions from them, as well as our committee as well. So the first question will be to Mr. Tichum. And Nancy, your question, please.
Thank you. Good evening. So the question that I have is, are you vaccinated, and how would you assess the city's response to COVID-19?
Yes, I am. Thank you for the question. I am fully vaccinated. That's one thing I was adamant to do before I even go and door knocking, I got to get vaccinated before I door knock. Safety is a big, big priority on my list. I love what the city did when a city manager, Eileen Donahue, she posed the status of like, where's the neighborhoods, how many people get affected by it, how many people is hospitalized. So those are something I'm looking forward as a counselor to make it happen, like just digest the communications so people know it. When she posed it on YouTube, she posed it on Facebooks, it's so easy to read. So this is something I'm looking forward to, just make the communication as simple as that. What's happening in the neighborhoods? Here's the breakdown of the COVID, it's right here, and this neighborhood should be more conscious, this neighborhood, why is it, why not? So the data is really important to me. I think data and communications is what I'm trying to go at, is trying to, once you have good communications, I think the relationship kind of builds by itself, and preventing stuff with COVID, it's not such a big, hard task.
Thank you. Counselor Rodney, please.
Yes, thank you. I am vaccinated. I feel the city provided a phenomenal response and services to the residents of the city Lowell from right at the outset of this unprecedented crisis that we had to deal with overnight. I give city manager Eileen Donahue and her staff, the Board of Health, incredible credit for their dedication, the nurses in the city, and the nurses across the, across the greater Lowell area and the Commonwealth. Whether it was free testing or attracting, working with the state to get free testing to the showcase cinemas at the outset, or even at the end when, you know, the city manager through the governor's office were able to get a site, the MACOM site, to provide shots, vaccines, vaccinations to the people of City Lowell. The efforts have been, I think, enormous. The communication has been from day one consistent, and the outreach has been incredible. The nurses, the work that they have done, the school nurses, the public health nurses to do contact tracing, to get the word out, to get the message out, working at Constance Lowell General Hospital and Lowell Community Health Center. I believe that Lowell was a leader in our response, not only through testing, but also in vaccination. So I think the city did, and it continues to do, quite frankly, yeoman's work to try to get people vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Eric Kidcher.
Thank you. I am vaccinated, and I do believe the city management team did an unbelievable job at their vaccinations and getting them out. We took on the huge toll on vaccination by, we looked at, first, we looked at the ones that needed it most, and I think that's the important part of our society. That tells you a lot about who we are in the state when we start looking at, you know, who needs the shots first. And I think that was important for the city. I think the city stepped up and has many outreaches from when they did showcase cinema, and you saw all the lines down there, and we dedicated that portion down there. We also looked at the boulevard when we did it up there. So I think the city management team, no manager comes into any city prior to COVID and thinks that that's what they're going to do for management, so they have to readjust everything. And I think the adjustments were for the best interest of the public, and I thank this management team and everybody involved in their efforts in how they distributed everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dan Rourke.
Yes, yes, we are all vaccinated, and also very satisfied with the response to the city, also for the council as well. Motions were filed repeatedly, meeting after meeting, they were answered promptly and with proper results from the city manager and her administration. Stayed before, we started off at showcase, went to MACOM, now College Stadium for free testing, and then when the vaccinations first came out, we rolled up to Lowell, again, the free vaccinations were done over in MACOM. But also has gone into neighborhoods, South Centerville and South Lowell, to South Common and North Common, to do mobile vaccinations. There was one just at City Hall right before school style, so the city has continued the outreach to every resident to make it available to be vaccinated. That still stands today, whether it's a phone call, there's no appointment needed, you can show up and get a vaccination. And as most things with the city of Lowell, we were leaders statewide. So I am vaccinated, but also proud of the job that council and administration has done in gossip and direct. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rourke. The next question will go to Counselor Elliott, and the question is from the public, and Chris will be asking that question.
Counselor, do you believe racism is a public health crisis in the city of Lowell?
Yeah, we, the city council, I think, adopted a resolution that was a much more comprehensive approach than just the request that was made to make a declaration. I was one of six city councils that did vote for that, for that resolution. That was a roadmap that outlined measures that we should take in order to address, and by the way, the first statement of that resolution was for Lowell to reject any form, racism in any, in all of its forms, just wanted to get it right. So, you know, since that time, a number of motions have been filed, however, the administration has responded to most, if not all, of the requests that were included from the DEI consortium. Let me begin with, it was mentioned earlier that there is a DEI officer that will be hired in place. Secondly, training for all employees, that has been completed and will continue by annual training. Citizen Advisory Committee, that was a priority from the listening session. Who can residents go to? Is there a committee that's going to be representative to air their concerns? We continue with hiring practices in the city to make our workforce more reflective of our community, as well as our boards and commissions. Are we done? Is there a lot more work to do? Yes. One of the requests was to identify funding and raise private funds, which I was proud to put that motion on the agenda, to identify and raise private funds for programs that will, that will address equity and inclusion and diversity. So I think the city has, has responded, will continue to respond. We don't, we haven't taken light from day one. It's important. I don't think Lowell is a racist city by any stretch, and we're going to continue to work with every community as we have to address the issues and to address the concerns that have been raised.
So Counselor, you reject the notion that racism is a public health crisis in the city?
I don't believe, there are crises in the city. The COVID was a crisis. Opioid epidemic is a crisis. Even included in the DEI response, there is a reference to social injustice. I think there are social injustices, yes.
Eric Kidcher?
Thanks, Chris. I do believe it is a public crisis, and I think the reason why I do that, I'm an engineer by trade, so I do a lot of study reading, and I look back at, you know, you look at UMass Lowell study on it, you look at our own human resource study on it. I was, I'm the only one, I think, on this board that worked for the city of Lowell, and I worked for the city Lowell for twelve years, and not once during that twelve years was I ever included in any kind of diversity training. So when I, and I was part of the hiring process as a senior manager. So I do believe that there are issues that we can take care of. I think the stat is the human resource audit that they did, and the study they did. But I think that when you look at that study and you look at it deeply, there's over a thousand employees in the city, and they only handed it out to over eight hundred, and out of those eight hundred, only thirty-six percent responded. So if you took the thousand and said, how many responded, it would be under thirty percent. And most of those were firefighters and police officers. So I think that we have to get out there, and we have to understand what we're looking at when we look at these numbers, and how do we not only include them, but, I mean, hire them, but we have to include them in the conversation. Just because we hire someone doesn't mean that they're included in the conversation. So when we look at hiring processes and we look at what we're going to do to train, I think the human capital process of the city is deplorable. When you look at the contracting, contracts, and you look at the budgets, and you see the underfunding towards human capital, you'll understand that the money is just not being allocated for the proper training for most things that the city employees do. So I do think that we can do better. I think as a city, I would agree with Counselor Elliott when he says that it's not a, you know, it's not the city of Lowell who's racist, but I do think that we can include more people and give more opportunities. And I think Chief Richardson has done that with offering food training to become a police officer. So I think that it points to that direction.
Thank you, Eric. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you. Now, I did not support the notion that public health crisis, racism in Lowell. The reason such is I became such Lowell-centric, the talk and the background about it, and I said we don't believe that Lowell has that problem. We do better, we improve always in all aspects in regards to racism. But you know, at the time when I spoke on the motion, my reasons for not supporting it was that the fire department, the last few classes, over half were minorities. The police department, same thing, over half of new hires were minority backgrounds. Lowell was so welcoming to refugees from other countries. We take them in, we educate them, we find them housing, find them employment, and what they need, not only just to survive, but to succeed in the city of Lowell. You watch the boards and meetings, not just the council, but planning board and advisories, you see minorities coming into the city to want to open a business up, and Lowell is more than helpful. And again, going back to prior statements, I believe Lowell is a leader with dealing with all apps, everybody represents all, and that's why I forgot the subject. Thank you.
And Challenger Chumlin?
I'm going to say, I second Counselor Rourke. Lowell is basically, Lowell is not racist. I've been here for over thirty years, I'm a refugee, color said, I don't think so. This whole racist stuff, I believe it's dividing the community and the neighborhoods. I go talk to neighbors, and I'm going knock on people's doors. The complaint, the most complaint and concern is not racist, it's really just, hey, when's my yard waste going to be picked up? It's been two weeks already. When's the road's going to be fixed? Because right now, in front of my house, it's flooded, it's broken. Stevens Street been fixed, why can't my road be fixed? Like, my kid's riding a bike, and he's falling, he's falling down because the road's broken. Those are like the most thing I hear most of when I'm going knocking on people's doors. And most of the time, I would say like eighty percent of the time, they told me, hey, I'm fine, I love where I'm at right now. This is the island, I love where I'm at right now. It's quiet, it's quiet here, Ty. I don't want anything to change. But I never hear, well, let's say one, only one or two person out of a couple hundred and thousand people I talk to, they say, okay, what do you think about races? Racism? Like, not, not much, because I don't, maybe it's just me, but I don't really experience it. It happened, but it don't happen to me. And I believe Lowell, what Counselor Rourke is saying, is really an open hand. I came in, they accept me. I get many opportunities to be an entrepreneur, business. I graduated from UMass Lowell because it's not just an Asian person helping, it's the white person, it's the black person, anybody, it's just human, human being just helping human out. So no, I don't, I don't believe Lowell's racist, and I don't believe racist. I say mental health is a health crisis. Drugs and opioids, domestic, sexual violence, those are happening right at the door, and we're not really looking at it. So if you're saying like it's a health crisis, I think those are health crisis, opioid, domestic violence, sexual violence. Boli's still happening. People still kiss. They're still experiencing it. And I thought boli was gone, but hey, it's not. So this is something I'm looking at too, like, how could we prevent it?
Thank you, Mr. Chum. I'd like to move on to the next question, unless any candidates would like to amend or change their response. Seeing none. The next question is to Mr. Eric Kidcher. I think I'm close. And the question is from the public. Nancy, would you please ask a question?
Yes, thank you. So the question is, where do you stand on the ballot question allowing the public to vote for the mayor?
I guess I have a question back about the question, would it be a strong mayor, or would it be a ceremonial mayor that we currently have? I'm not sure what the question really refers to.
The question would be, do you want, where do you stand on the ballot question this year for the community to be able to vote for the mayor? So do you, yes?
I guess the question's not very clear. When we look at, are we deleting the manager, or are we going to elect a mayor, are we going to do a ceremony? If it's a ceremonial mayor, I would agree the public should absolutely have a voice in that. I believe that when you look at our government, why not? It's a ceremonial mayor, it's not a strong mayorship such as a Lawrence. I think that it brings some value to give the, it takes away from the diversity, the fighting between city counselors when you're starting to vote for certain candidates for mayor. So I think it would be a great thing for the city that it would allow a ceremonial mayor to be elected from the people, and I think the people should have a say.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke, please.
Yes, I would agree that the people should vote the mayor in. You know, you do hear that ceremonial position, but you're recently, over the past eight to ten years, it's taken on a much more larger role in just a ceremonial position, you know, to lead the city council, to lead the school committee, to be that conduit between the two groups. It's a very important position that has taken on a much, much greater role over the past decade. Those, we vote now, the districts and the at-large, I believe that the mayor should come from the at-large group of candidates, the candidates that do show, that they want to run citywide, they want to represent the whole city, and do their best to get a higher overall turnout and a more spirited selection of candidates, knowing that the mayor's on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Taisheng, please.
Yes. Yes, and finally, you're talking about transparency, a lot of people say, hey, I don't know who's voting for the mayor. This is the transparencies. I say yes, because now you're giving the power to the people. You always say, hey, I'm all for the people, the people for this, people for that, but with that yes, say, hey, you are the one who voted for the mayor? Yeah, that's giving the power to the people, that truly is. I believe once, people say, hey, we don't really have a big turnout in an election. I think this would help boost that turnout a little bit more. Now people say, hey, I got a saying, it's not just the presidential election, I got a saying, now I can pick the mayor. So I think it's, it's good, I think it's finally, and yes, and yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Rodney Elliott?
Yes, thank you. I actually filed the motion to put the ballot, question on the ballot. I actually think that the council should have voted to allow the people to vote this election, but given the circumstances, that a ballot question is going to be placed to ask whether people want to vote for mayor or not vote for mayor. I happen to think that people want to vote for mayor. And why not? It's a fundamental right. Why shouldn't people have the right to vote for someone, whether it's ceremonial or not? And in this case, it's, the mayor is more than ceremonial. They are the chair of the, of the school committee, they create chairmanships, they create assignments to subcommittees. Yes, they go to ribbon cuttings, but it's a, it's a significant role, it continues to evolve as government and municipal operations become a little bit more complex. So I think that it's kind of a no-brainer. I hope it passes. If we want people to engage more, which was part of this lawsuit, then we have to continue to empower people and give them a stake in the election. And as I've gone for, for May, June, July, spring, summer, fall, knocking on well over fifteen, sixteen hundred doors, people want to become engaged, and more importantly, they really don't know who the mayor is. So I think it makes sense to put it on ballot, people should have the experience, and I believe in the people will make the right choice.
Thank you for that. So the next question goes to Counselor Rourke. Chris?
Thanks, Pora. Rodney, you just mentioned the voter rights lawsuit. This question focuses on the voter rights lawsuit. The city decided to settle that out of court rather than fight it in court. And, you know, if you read the lawsuit, it was designed really, I think it might be one way to stimulate interest both among voters and to try to get more people to run. If you look at the results from last week's preliminary election, voter turnout was apathetic, and we do not see dozens and dozens of candidates like we used to back in the sixties and the seventies and the eighties. So that's kind of a long, long wind-up. What do you think the voter rights lawsuit accomplished, if anything?
I think it created a more fair and diverse election system. You know, for many years now, you know, the Belvedere section of the city has controlled the council, and before that, it was the Highlands section of the city that controlled the council. This way, with the eight districts and the three at-large, it does give fair representation to each and every neighborhood in Lowell. You know, as regards to turnout and candidates to run, you know, it is the first year of the new system, of the new way we do vote, and I would hope in the future that the candidates do increase, and I think that it will. You know, running in a district race creates a different atmosphere than running citywide with, you know, seventeen, eighteen candidates, and it's better off for the city, the more people there get involved, the more people there that give their ideas, the city of Lowell will be better off for it. So I think the eight districts and the three at-large was the best way to go in this situation.
Can you repeat the question again? My apologies.
Yeah, I maybe editorialized a little too much in my phrasing to Dan, so I apologize for that. The voter rights lawsuit, the highly-publicized voter rights lawsuit, what do you think it accomplished?
Oh, a lot, a lot.
Tell us.
You talk about like opportunities, this is it. I ran 2019, all the way from St. Patrick's Day to November, that was it, my whole Monday to like Sunday, it was just door knocking. One person, thousand a door, and it was difficult for a first-time runner. The budget, I learned a lot, you need money to really run, people really just donate, just like you donate to St. Jude's, donate to breast cancer, but it's just a lot, it takes a lot of money, a lot of focus, a lot of time out with family. And it's, with this new, new law, law that's happening, I love it, because now I could balance the time with my family, I could balance really knowing what's happening in one particular neighborhood, the Highlands, hey, what is it that you guys need? And they told me, and I could go to over, over, I could double knock instead of just, oh, I'm trying to reach that other person, that other neighborhood. But yeah, it's given a lot of opportunity to new, to me. I got a lot of opportunities, and I see a lot of different, you're talking about races, you talk race, Latinos, right, they're showing up, they're candidate too. There's a lot of diversities happening in, in the mix of the head, hat to, for the council seat. There's a lot of talk about it, I'm hearing more of not just the next year, but the upcoming, like more people's going to run more. So yeah, it's created good opportunities. I like it, I love it, thank you for those who fought for it, appreciate it, your efforts, you put your name on it, you took the risk, and it creates such a positive, positive things, especially for, for new runner. I think it's just a good opportunity. So yeah, love it.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Cott. I have always believed in district representation for a number of reasons. Number one, I do think it will engage residents in a particular neighborhood once they start to identify who their representatives are and who will serve them best. Secondly, it will be more representative of our, of the people across the community, whether it's the downtown minority, majority districts that have been created, or, you know, South Lowell now has a representative, Centerville will now have a representative. For many years, the candidates or elected officials really came from essentially three sections of the city, Belvedere, Potracaville, and the Highlands. So I think it, it has and will accomplish the goal of having a more diverse representation, both geographically, as well as reflection of our community. You know, the lawsuit, rolling it out now, or excuse me, implementing the electoral process now has been difficult, especially with the COVID crisis. It's been complicated by the fact that the census has been delayed by a number of months, which now put us in this really complicated position of limiting the polling locations. I believe we're going to get I believe we're going to get through this. There's going to be a good, solid core of city councilors. Lowell will be strong. We have a good city administration that I hope stays and I advocate, and advocate that she stays. I leaned on you because there are so many issues that need continuity. So I, I think we will find the results will be beneficial to the people in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. And Challenger, get your.
Thanks, Chris. For many years, I've believed in district representation. That's why I went out and I coached baseball and I coached basketball. And I decided that we would clean the areas, we would cut the parks, Calvary Park in Highland. For many years, we wore those shirts and we were proud of it. And when we went into other neighborhoods like Patagaville or Shed Park and Belvedere, the first thing they would say is you're from the Highlands. So when I look at this, I look at it as this is our district, this is where we come from, this is what we've always dedicated our lives to. When we look at crosswalks not being painted, sidewalks being done, when we look at the infrastructure, we look at our neighborhood first as we go off to our workplaces. So when I, when I think of district representation, it's about our neighbors. And that's what I look at when you vote. It's about our neighbors. It's about the city as a whole, but it comes down to it, you're really focused on a lot of your neighborhood issues. Neighborhood issues can come from funding sources and the budget. So when you look around and you look at this, the rolling out of the process has been very confusing for a lot of voters. And that's why I want to implore people to get out and vote. And with District Eight, and understand with District Eight, there's only Ty Jung and myself running in District Eight. So in the at-large, there's six people. So those are the things that need to be taught about this. But I do agree with breaking up the city into districts, but the way it was done, I don't think was fairly done or had enough time to get it out to the voter and make them educated enough for this process to work this November, or even work in the preliminary as Chris Scott said, with only 9% turnout. And some candidates worked extremely hard to get out that 9%. So I do think people are very confused, they're not understanding. So when you get to some districts, they think they're not voting when they were. And I think the outreach was not sufficient enough. But going back to, do I think district representation is the right way of doing it? I absolutely do. I've represented the Highlands my entire life, from when I was a child, putting on that Highlands baseball uniform, to today coaching kids and trying to give them a better life. And with 32 years of municipal government experience, I truly believe in district representation.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you, thank you. So we're down to our last question. And this question goes to Mr., uh, Mr. T. Jung?
We'll be charged.
Yep. And it's from the public.
Yes, thank you. So the question says, how will you work to repair Lowell's aged infrastructure?
Good questions. Can I just do the dance for us? I think communication is it. I use, I'm a Toastmaster, this is a past president, and Toastmaster, we talk about communications and leaderships. This is it. Communications, it's just better, simple communication. I'm not talking about, hey, one-on-one, email going back and forth, but communication to go out to different communities, talking about Latino, the black community, Asian communities, like all different type of communities. It's just, how do we get that communication process and break it down simple enough to all these communities? LTC is one of them. This is a simple process in getting communication going. So infrastructures, communications, it's really start with the plan and the data. You really have to do a need assessment first, like what kind of things that Lowell really need? What kind of buildings? What kind of business? And then who's going to put their hand into it to make that happen? So you've really got to start first, like what do Lowell need regarding infrastructures? And then go into like, hey, who's the right person for it? And then go another one, I'm a business person. So now, how do we help these person create a blueprint to make it happen for their own business and has prospects to succeed from it? So communication is it. I think communication is the best way. Same thing with downtown, how do we attract more visitors to downtowns? Communication, just go talk to the owner. The owners tell you what they need. And we just have to basically meet in between and work it out. I think it's simple. If we could break down communications in the simplest form that we can, many things could be accomplished.
Thank you. Councilor Rodney Elliott?
Could you ask a question again, please? You said aged infrastructure, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, good. Thank you. So Lowell's poised to receive $76.5 million in American Rescue Planning funding from the federal government. This is one-time funding that we have an opportunity to address a lot of the core deficiencies that we've, have not addressed in the last number of years. However, the city has used our capital plan and we have been effective in addressing streets and sidewalks. We have invested millions into our water and our sewer and our wastewater. However, we have a long way to go. Clearly, Chapter 90 money that we get from the state to repair our streets and sidewalks and our roads is not enough. I hope to use, you know, this ARPA funding money to address a lot of the infrastructure, including internet access. What we did learn during the COVID crisis, all these schoolchildren didn't have adequate internet access to go to school. So I think this is a great opportunity to use our ARPA funding in addition with our city finance, our city capital plan. We've, we've made great strides with our schools, certainly the high school and the roofs and the boilers. But there's, there's a lot to go. So again, this ARPA money, leveraging state funding, you know, the state will roll out programs, $5 billion. I believe that there's more resources that will come. So again, I think the ARPA funding is a great opportunity. We're going to have to use some of that money to offset some of the deficits that we've experienced as a result of COVID. But still, there's, that's a lot of money to do a lot of good things.
Thank you. Eric Getcher?
Thank you again. When you look at infrastructure, and I've had 32 years of municipal experience based all on infrastructure. It comes down to capital planning, it comes down to budgetary planning. When you look at our firehouses, you look at our police stations, you look at our schools, we have not planned anything. We have managed under fire. When something fails, we manage and we try to fix it. That's not the proper way of planning. If you look at that $464 million budget, you will see that it's a field capital planning budget. My experience is in Chapter 90 funds, we need to lobby the state for more. The Mass Municipal Association has said that for many years. They've pointed out that there's deficiencies in funding in the Chapter 90 funds. We need to get to our state legislators, we need to get to our state senator and make sure that we get those fundings back so that we can do it. When we do roads and streets over and we're looking at separation of sewer and drain systems, we should be doing that at the time we're doing paving. We should separate the two and put it back out and connect it outside of the work zone. When we start looking at infrastructure, we have to look further into, how can we stretch our dollar today so it will save future dollars? When we look at the HVAC systems in the schools, that's where the money should be spent. This is our breathing apparatus to prevent COVID, to try to help kids and students have a better atmosphere to work with them. When you look at the, when you look at the parks in Rex, you're seeing that our infrastructure is not being maintained currently. And in just one drive through the city, you'll see that we're not even painting our crosswalks today. So we're falling very far behind. We're moving the monies to other places. $72 million can turn into a billion dollars. If it's spent inappropriately, it doesn't matter, that money. And when you talk about those funds, you talk about where they're going to be spent. So far, if you listen to everyone speak, we have $600 million in adequately, and it is not being spent in the proper ways. When you look at the water mains, we just went down Stevens Street and we never cut into the water main to see what is the condition of those water mains. I want to thank you.